Thank you, I believe, tonight we have Alex Clark with us, who I do recall you coming to our, we had a developers meeting banquet where we had all the developers, bankers and folks back in, I believe, 2021, and that was part of our overall review and assessment of the work that was going on in Republic. So, talking about what's going on from time to time, it's good, you know, I hope you all are appreciating the workshops because one of the things I told, I know I told Councilman Neil, whenever we went into the news, he was like, y'all are gonna get inundated because there's a lot of information and getting up to speed of what's really happening in the markets. You hear a lot of things about housing, high density or multifamily, just a lot of broad statements. There needs to be actual math to it and an analysis to it versus hyperbole. And so, in doing that, getting the analysis of what's out there and what is, how those decisions are made, was one of those that we wanted to talk about. We got another one coming up on economic development. So I feel like that this is a great time for Alex to come forward and just make his presentation. And what I would ask you to do is if you have a question for Alex or gonna make a statement because this is being recorded, go ahead and just tap your mic red when you do that. And that's, that's all I have. Alex, come on up.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, David, for inviting me then and now, of course, and honored to be here and appreciate each and every one of you and the service that you provide to the community. So I'm glad to be able to bring some of my service and my skills and abilities to let you guys learn a little something tonight. So hopefully the information's fruitful and, and like I said, I'm very used to being in front of people. I've done this for years and years. I have a previous service background of 25 years. So, like I said, anything and everything, I have thick skin. So if you guys want to dive deep, I tried, there's a lot of data here. I tried to kind of skim it and just give you the nuts and bolts of it. But at any point, if you have time, and like I said, I want to get through the information and then give each, each council person an opportunity to ask questions. Or like I said, if I don't know the answer, I'll, we'll go and find it for you or bring it back. You know, this is a short period of time that we have here this evening. So if I can ever do something for the city or for council member or your districts or your wards, you want to know something and you think I might have the information, you know, please, please ask me. So I'd be glad to help. So thanks so much. But we'll get right into it. And like I said, I'll get kind of through this, through this information the best that we can. Sorry, I'm not used to standing at a podium. So if I wander a little this way or that way, but I'll try to just kind of represent the data and we'll just get through these slides. But this is, before we get too in-depth, this is mostly on the residential side of it. So my specialty is obviously residential sales. I'm a licensed broker in the state of Missouri. I own 417 homes here in Republic. I've been a Republic resident for 24 years now. So I've been here a long time. My fam, my wife's family is from this community of over 100 years. So we're definitely entrenched in it and everything like this. But, you know, housing data, and that is what I do. I've built houses from the ground up. I still have a construction company of over 23 years. I've been in real estate since oh three. I've had a broker's license since oh six. So if I know anything, I know houses. So that's kind of where we're at. This is a lot of data up here. And so what I did is, since we're already halfway through fiscal 24, I went ahead and ran the year-to-date numbers, just so you can see, because the conditions are changing in our markets. So we're, and we're seeing that, we're seeing a slowdown, and we'll present that data a little bit further into this. But total sales volume, if we look back at 23, was the 111.6 million. Of that, because it's always nice to differentiate these numbers, is 43 of that was new construction. So almost half, not quite there, is coming from that new construction field. So, and I can sort those data fields, looking at the MLS. This is all MLS data, multi-list data that comes off of it. So this is all inside the city limits. So obviously, the, the amount would have been higher if I wouldn't have included, it would have included those properties that are Republic addressed, but still in Green County. So, but this is specifically inside the city limits. 413 single-family units sold in 23, 148 of those were new construction. And so sometimes you might see, depending on how you look at the data and the analytics from the MLS, obviously, a property may come on the market in 22, but doesn't sell until 23, or was built and being built in 23 and sells in 24. So this is all sold data. That's really what we look at in the real estate industry when we're talking about comps and what your home is worth and those kinds of things. So that's really it. Days on market, you know, we're seeing that extend because of market conditions, interest rates have slowed the pace of sales. So these average days on market are starting to creep up, and that's been a trend for about the last two years, really, all of 23 and most of 24. One of the big ones that goes along with this is the average price per square foot is what we look at for comp data. And if you've heard anything about construction and where rates have been, I think I can remember the cheapest house I ever built is for a guy you know pretty well, Mark Prevee, Mark and Heather. I built their house back in oh six, and I built it for $56 a foot. So that was really cheap compared to where we're at on an average now for new construction at 172. It's even increased to 184, and that is for basic level homes. That is nothing, that is not your higher end, that is your entry-level kind of home right there. There are some on the market today at 213 a foot and up. So that's just, that's just an average of that. And of those new homes sold, they usually go for right at their asking price. They're at that 90, that's what that listing ratio is, is 99.93% of their list price. So they might fluctuate very little, but that's, that's pretty much it. So, next one is kind of Republic's six-year timeline. So this is really where I think you get to see the bigger and broader picture of it. So as David said, we spoke back in 21, and obviously, we were seeing some incredible sales numbers. A jump from, if you look at the total sales volume of 85 million to 126 million that year. So you can definitely see that the market was back, it was strong, interest rates were good, the supply was there. So that's why that demand is there. You can kind of also look at that middle column, the sold price per square foot, kind of paints the picture over time, right? And how quickly those prices have risen. This is a six-year trend, and you can see that those prices are just inflating dramatically. So we'll get into it a little bit later. And like I said, I wanted to talk at it, talk about it, is that, you know, this isn't an anomaly. We're not alone in this. There's an additional graph here we'll look at a little bit that paces us with Green County, with Missouri, and with the US. And so we see that we're not alone. This is not unique to us. This is a nationwide trend that's showing that. But units sold, as you can see, we've seen a little bit of a downtick in that, you know, and that's just basically because availability, interest rates are down, or interest rates are up, so that's slowing the market. Those units are going to come down in that. And hopefully, these numbers go along with what the builds department has seen as far as permits and stuff. Like I said, not every new home that a builder builds is listed on the market. So this data is just from stuff that is actively listed on the MLS. They may sell it, they may pull the permit and go and build the house and sell it themselves. It doesn't go on the MLS. So that's just kind of some of those numbers that are there. This one is kind of, you know, comparing us to the area and everything that we have to offer. So this looks at Republic, Nixa, Ozark, Willard, Rogersville, kind of the main, the main suburbs around Springfield metro. And this kind of gives you an idea, this is the 23 comparison. And I tried to break down again, all those different numbers, the unit, the actual numbers of units that have transacted, the average sold price of those homes, the sold price per square foot, and then also the value range is important. When you look at those homes and where it is, because that can alter, depending on what the inventory is in your community, that can alter those sales volumes dramatically. So if you're, you know, makes a big difference if you're selling a $100,000 house or a $300,000 house, what's your predominant product that you're selling. So that's where we go back to those average sold numbers. So you can see that Nixa is, has a higher sales volume, slightly higher units, but they have a much higher average sold price. And like I said, that's just based on probably the, the type of homes being built by the builders and what that demand is and stuff like that. It's not necessarily that a three-bedroom, two-bath there costs that much more. They're relatively equal. It's just based on inventory and stuff. So that's what we're looking at there. This is your estimated values for, for June of 24, or through June of 24. The median estimated value is at 245,000 out of the homes that have been listed and sold. This is that graph that I was telling you about that shows kind of the numbers and the comparisons between Republic. This goes all the way back to oh eight, when this data set and then runs through June of 24. So you can see the blue line there is Republic, and so we're right on pace with the rest of Green County, Missouri, and the US as far as the trend of the lines, if you look at that stuff. And it shows those as a relative estimated value. We're just looking at purely value in this, in this data set. The six-month change, we're still seeing an increase in prices. It's still, even though sales volume is down for 23 and continues to be down for 24, we're not seeing any depression in the prices. So inflationary prices of the products, you know, like I said, I still build, we still develop and reinvest in our investment properties and other projects. And I can tell you that it is, we are feeling it. You know, my perfect example of that is a three-quarter Gator, Gator Pex valve that used to be eight or nine dollars. I bought one the other day for $27. So if you look at it from a holistic perspective of houses, people are always, you know, I'm in real estate, they're always, hey, when's this bubble gonna burst? And I'm like, there's nothing to burst. When, when the actual bubble costs that much to make, you can't burst that bubble. So like I said, stuff may go down, there may be some, you know, big economic recession or something that hits, but all in all, there's really not a bubble to burst there. The important thing to look back on too is that, you know, how much you want to get into analytics. I like it on the investment side of it. So I'll look at hundred-year trends, not just, you know, a shorter picture like this. And everybody is, you know, they've, the talk of the last few years has been the appreciation, right? I mean, Republic in 21, I think, had 24% appreciation. You gained a quarter of the total value of your home in one year. That's incredible. But when you trend this out over 100 years, take out the recession of oh nine, we're really right back on track. So there's only been two economic depressions in real estate, the Great Depression and the oh nine mortgage hit. So if you look at that hundred-year trend line. So just some, some historical perspective there to give you that. So like I said, it seems huge, and we did. If you bought your house, you know, in, in 18, 19, 20, you know, you felt that, you were like, oh, you know, what is, how is my house worth this much more? We were just kind of catching up. We were playing catch-up. Now COVID and other things drove that a little higher too, because people were wanting to move, get something bigger and go from there. Any questions before, data set wise, I'll be glad to discuss numbers. I brought more numbers. There's, there's lots of great information. Like I said, I could probably talk up here for hours and just bore you with data. But, you know, like I said, I'd really like, I'll take anybody's questions. And like I said, at any point, I've got additional data. I just didn't put it completely in this presentation, just because I think you can only digest so much of it. So. Yep. It's probably that the, that the systems weren't online yet. So this is pulled out of RPR, which is Realtor Property Resources. It's a national company that basically tracks all your countywide data. So the data set for Green County was probably not instituted in that system until that date point. So, yep. Questions, numbers? Like I said, we'll go back to anything.
Next, their average, they sold 500 and some houses with an average price of over 300,000. Is that because they built higher-priced houses, or is that just the market down there?
It's, I think it's a number of things. Yes, they do have a lot of subdivisions that are in the higher market value. It also is the, again, the demand for it, the product that's available, there's a lot of factors there. You also have to look at the square mileage area of the city itself, the population density. There's a lot of other things. So this is purely just looking at the numbers based on that. You know, obviously, Republic's going to be a lot bigger than Rogersville and Willard. And so you have to kind of take that and just adjust for yourself. As the market as a whole, as a real estate agent, looking at Nixa, they have more higher-end homes available. They have more second and third homes, what I would call, which are higher-price range homes, available and on the market than Republic does.
So that brings another question. If, since you're a builder and a real estate person, if the builders built higher-end houses in Republic, do you think they would sell them?
Depends on where they're at. They can overprice themselves, but there is, and I'll get to that in just a minute. You're, you're, you're getting ahead of me a little bit. And where that market demand is, and it shows in the data set of where, where our demand and what product we need available for, for our citizens, where they're looking at. So yeah, good questions. Absolutely. You're right on track with what I kind of want, want to move into next. Like I said, looking at the data sets, any other questions or anything? And like I said, we'll take more at the end. We'll definitely look at that. Kind of coming from my background, SWOT analysis are just your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. It's just a, basically, I can bring all the information and all the things that I could think about when you ask me about housing in Republic, Missouri. So this is how I broke it down. It's just a great way to brainstorm and kind of put stuff together. I can dive in, I'll speak to more of this. And if you have any questions, you know, just, just let me know. So obviously, one of the strengths is high demand. If you haven't noticed, it's in demand, housing in Republic. So everybody wants it. If I list a rental property, it's gone. If I list a house, if it's attractively priced and it's decent, it is gone. It is moving quickly. So that is there. Why is that? It's because the environment that the city has created, the industrial growth, the commercial growth, everything like that. It's the access. So there's, there's lots of things that go into that. So these are just the, some of the strengths that I went through. The lower bureaucracy of government, I can tell you, I work with a lot of different cities and municipalities. I used to work for one for 25 years. I've seen it, and it's appreciated. It is very smooth. I've been through it. I'm not only a business owner in town, but I've been through the permitting process. I've, see what it's like. I've been, I'm a customer and, you know, I see what it's doing. And that means a huge thing. So kudos to all of you, to manage, city manager, city management, planning, builds. That means a ton. When, when a city is open for business, and like I said, I'll go back on my 24 years of, of history, there were certain cities that I would not do business in because of the bureaucracy. I did one job in a south, in a southeast community down, down 65, one time. I had many invitations to come back there and do more business and do more construction and remodeling. And after dealing with that municipality once, that was all I needed. I did not want to be back down there. So it does impact your economic situation in your city. So the area reputation, again, it's out there, it's, that's in the business community, the city, the faith, just everything. It is a good, thriving community. The schools are listed down there. It's not last by any means, but we've got a great reputation. Anybody that I'm showing property to, Republic is always at the top of their list. You know, Nixa is, is there as well. You know, it just depends on what phase of life that people are in. You know, if you've got young kids, that's probably a big, important part of where you're going to be buying. I can't tell you how many people I've sold their homes in Nixa, and they've moved back to Springfield because they're still professional people, and they're tired of that commute. They don't want to go up and down 160 every day, twice a day. And that is a motivating factor, that they've literally moved back into the inner city, into the better neighborhoods. You know, your Pickwick Development and some of those inner city around Mercy and some of the university heights and stuff, those neighborhoods, the reason they're so popular is because they're good neighborhoods right in that community. And it's literally people coming back in for those commutes, the doctors, the lawyers, the people, professionals and have to be in Springfield. So our access is paramount when it comes to that. That's one of the things, and I know on the commercial side of it, you guys are talking about it, you're working with businesses, telling them how easy it is to get in and out of this community with all the access points. So, job opportunity, values, quality of life, you know, like I said, we seem to have it all right now. So these are all the strengths and things that we're working toward. I don't think I'm telling you anything new. I'm just trying to highlight it from the, from the residential side of it. Weaknesses, same thing. High demand is also a weakness. High prices, also a weakness. So median home price for 2023 was $247,000. So that is up tremendously. I probably should have put together a presentation on just that value raise and how much housing, just our basic, and this is, this is the median, this is right there. This is, you know, this is high, and it's high everywhere. It's just changed. So that makes homes unaffordable for that many more people. So that is a weakness. And like I said, what do we do to address that? And that's why you guys are here, learning about this, right? And making changes and doing the best that we can. Types of homes available, there is home gaps in our inventory. The inventory is very short right now. It's running just over two months. You know, it's been shorter than that. I mean, it's been down to weeks, which is, was unheard of for a while, you know, but I've also seen it. I've done it so long that, you know, where houses sat on the market for a year to sell. We're not in that. We do have home gaps in the second and third level homes. And what I mean by that price point is above 250, or above 350, to that 550 range is somewhere in that gap right there. We have some high-end homes that price per square foot are very nice. They're very nice homes, but they're on the smaller side. They're only 22, 26, maybe getting close to 3,000 feet, but they're over a half million dollars. That's not what the average family of five needs. So that's where you got, that's what I'm talking about when I say these, these second and third home gaps. It's, it's, we've been in our 322, three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, or maybe a three-car garage. And now the kids are getting bigger. They need more space. They need their, you know, game area or whatever they're doing. We don't have those homes in inventory. Those walkout basement homes that are less cost per square foot are just not in inventory. If they do come in inventory, they're gone fast. So that's, that's really where, where we need to be at with those. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. Diversity of builders and developers. So one of the things that I've noticed, like I said, I built a few homes here back, I think, oh three, oh four, oh five, in Republic. And one of the differences, this is my personal thing, and is we seem to be honed in on a few select builders that are obviously the big players. The difference between now and then is back then, that wasn't necessarily the case. There was a few individuals that, what I would call big builders back then, they may be built 20 homes. That was a big builder. That's nothing in today's world and society. But what I don't see is, I can refer back to Stanton Estates, is I think in that little subdivision, there was probably eight or nine, maybe 10 builders. And it offered diversity in the house plans and the quality of the builds, and it really built a good neighborhood because you had that different offset. You're not seeing the same thing just stamped over and over again. And so I think the diversity of developers and builders is something that looks, need to be, it needs to be looked at and developed to more. Right now, I know two builders that would build if I could find them lots. But nobody shares. Everybody that has lots, they're not giving them up. Okay? So they're gonna build, they're gonna look at, that's, they're looking at that as that's profit that I'm, I'm losing. So the, I don't know what changed that, what, what changed that dynamic. But there was just people who were doing just strictly developments back then, developing subdivisions, making some profit on that, and they were happy with it. Now, it's, they all want that. They want that, that, that all to themselves. So that's what I'm speaking of there. There's people ready to jump into those markets. They just have to be there. Try to find a multifamily lot, doesn't even, I mean, I don't even know how to do that. And I'm in the business, right? Unless I want to find the piece of property and develop it myself. So effective, adaptive planning and zoning. So what I'm getting at here is kind of, and it's planning and zoning ordinances is what I'm looking at here. So I think some of the areas that I noticed that, and that's kind of some of these pictures that I'm highlighting here, is the aesthetics, the common areas, the buffers, the trails. There, there's some different things that I see going on in the new subdivisions that I think can be improved upon. And that's really up to you all, is what that looks like. What does this community look like in the future with our future growth and development? So, you know, we are, we are changing the landscape. I drive County Line Road, that's why I took these pictures. I drive it just about, you know, several times a week because I live out that way. And so that landscape has dramatically changed in the last couple of years and will change even more. What I think it is lacking is some unique features. I think that, that there's some things that can just be done a little better. And how you govern that through the ordinances and the subdivisions, what you require of those developers, I think there is some things to look at there and some things that we can, you know, maybe do better as a city. Again, it's aesthetics, common areas, buffers, trails. You know, one of the biggest things that I see is going through that roundabout right now. Now I'm staring into the back of five vinyl-sided houses. I'm wondering how many trampolines, plastic sheds, plastic chairs, barbecue grills, and everything else that I'm going to stare at instead of, you know, a field. And I, and I understand things change. I understand somebody bought that property and paid a price for it so they can do the things that they want to it. But also, that changes the landscape of our community and the way that we look and the way that we are. So like I said, whether that's addressed through ordinance or the builders just themselves, you know, doing different things to make their communities unique. I think a good example of that is, the name just slipped out of my Valley Trail. It was the first subdivision that I saw that really, it's the back part of Valley Park. It's got some unique builds and some different features in that. Now, I think the price point has made that move slower. But I think some of those things, and we'll cover it a little bit more into the threats part of that. And I think there's some great opportunity there. So, unique features, we have great features. This is also a strength of Republic, right? So I don't want to just this, this was more of, I think, in our housing. We need some unique features and some different things. So opportunities, there's great opportunities here. And like I said, I don't want to be, the things that the city is doing and the community's growth is phenomenal. I don't, I don't want to overpaint that by, by bringing up a few negative things and stuff. So the opportunities are there. I hear Mr. Cameron speak all the time about, you know, state, local, federal partners. I also think the developers, the business owners, you know, everything here is, is there. There's dramatic opportunities that everybody's taking advantage of, and I think that's great. The available space, even though I just talked about there's no lots, there is ground for the city to move. There is a lot of ground to the north and, and like I said, where the industrial complexes are going in and stuff. It's amazing what is there, right? And so we, we can say that there's, there's, there's not a lot of space available, but there really is when you look at it. It's just going to change the landscape and how we shape that is, is up to you all. So that's what I put in there. To me, even though Republic has been here, it's got a long history of downtown. You can see the old photo there. To me, we're still in a design phase of the city. So you guys should be excited about where you're at, because this place is going to look different. And so it's just a matter of how we guide that difference and what it looks like down the road. So the area reputation, the values, the quality of life, those are values that you have to hold true, because if not, you'll lose who we are as a community and who we are as a Republic. And I hear the things, the things that I see and that I hear are very positive in the community, and people want that. Like I said, you know, there's a lot of things going on in this world, and I think a lot of people come to Republic and feel like, hey, this feels like home. This feels like a little bit of old-fashioned to me. Not that we're not changing, we're just doing it in a different way that's more responsible for our community. So part of those partnerships and stuff and the opportunities is, again, developer cost sharing, you know, and how we get things done as a city and as a community with those developers' help and with those business community help, right? So a lot of that is going to come in. Those are some great opportunities. One of the things in some of these pictures highlighted, obviously, the development along 60 is incredible, the industrial areas and commercial areas are incredible, and that's such a big win for, for Republic. Some of the little things, you know, just as I'm out driving around, I think you guys just finished Main Street updates and some improvements, crosswalks and stuff. Maybe that was a few months back or a year back. But this is looking up toward the intersection of 60 and Main in that middle picture. You see the wrought iron fence, the brick columns. On the other side, there's, there's a little bit of green space. There's a sidewalk. There's some improvements. There's a neandering little sidewalk there, the community pool for, for the subdivisions right over there to the left. Sorry, I couldn't make my pictures too big. The reverse of this is looking out Hines to the east side of the community as it approaches ZZ and some of those neighborhoods out there. Those subdivisions have been there for maybe 10 years, 15 years. And there's a dramatic difference driving down the roads. I just kind of getting ready for this. I went out in the community, I drove around, I looked at neighborhoods, I looked at what, what is this street? Why does this street look so nice and this one doesn't? Right? And they're basically the same houses being built, but there was something different done. So that's what I'm looking at when I say, you know, the design phase, helping developers cost, you know, offset those costs to the city down the road, because those are maintenance items that you're going to have to maintain those right-aways, those sidewalks. And if that infrastructure isn't there, I mean, I'm not going to take my kids down Hines Street out east there. It looks bad. There's 15 different privacy fences that all border that main road that those subdivisions are, you know, everybody's put up their fence at different times. Some people stain it, some people don't. Some people let it lay over, some people don't, you know, versus another subdivision that had a nice iron fence, put it, put down it, and that's going to look good for years and years to come. So those are just some of those little things. Those are opportunities that I think we can address through ordinance, through developers, through, through the business people to get those things done for us from the get-go so that we never have a problem with those maintenance issues. You know, I don't know what the infrastructure cost on that is, but it's going to be a lot to redo that road, to make it worthwhile for the community to get to the parks and the trails and everything else that they've got. So now we get to the fun part. I've hit on in a little bit, but here's your threats. So one of the biggest things, these are all Republic, Missouri photos within the last week that I've taken. So like I said, sorry, they're not blown So like I said, sorry, they're not blown up a little bit more. But one of the glaring things, and I've seen it, but when I got out and drove the community, honestly, it made me cringe a little bit more. Sorry. But lack of code enforcement. There are people, you know, I didn't see it in the HOA driven subdivisions, which that's a whole nother subject we could talk about forever. I'm pro and against, I think they have their place. They, but they tend to be better looking subdivisions. The one thing that really took me back in looking at these with lack of code enforcement and how properties were maintained, the amount of junk in them, you know, the TV entertainment centers and the couches sitting out front, rotting in the weather, you know, these are unsightly was the surprising thing to me was, is I found homes in about every price range that had some issue that would be addressed by code enforcement. So I don't know what that is. I know I've jumped on the city's website, there's a reporting mechanism. I don't know the process beyond that. So I'm just saying that's just something that I noticed out driving around. And that's something that, you know, to me and my beliefs that government should assist and protect its community and its citizens. And I think code enforcement is that because I can't do anything about the neighbor across the street from me that likes to pile junk all over their yard. You know, that's, it's unsightly and it, and it affects me, you know? They should take care of it, but it affects my property values and the properties that we own. So that is an issue that we need to address if we're not addressing it already. You know, we talked about, kind of won't go into the planning and zoning gaps, but just some of those things that can be maybe addressed in ordinance. Depletion of city resources. I know the city's been totally proactive with, with police and fire and doing all those things. Like I said, I'm highly tied into those communities. And, and so it's been great to see that. But the more people, the more houses, the more residential you bring to this city, the higher demands that are placed on that as long with public works, streets and all that stuff. You guys know that and understand that. That infrastructure maintenance, that's something, like I said, looking at it as a, as a person in real estate, that's something that I think the, the city can shed some of that cost of those infrastructure improvements, those sidewalks, those green spaces and all those stuff. Have that ready, have it paid for by somebody else. You know, if, if you want, like I said, this is just my idea. If you want high density housing, I want a buffer, you know? And, and you ask for that as a community and stuff like that. And I think that's pretty resounding out there. People, you know, I've heard the word vinyl sided city, you know? And is that the reputation you want in your community? Is that one person's narrow focus? Sure, it might be. But if that's all that you're building and all that you're developing, you might soon look that way. So another suburb, what sets us apart? I mean, we looked at the sales and data numbers from NIXA and Ozark and all those communities. Really what, what does set us apart? What is different about us? You know, like I said, we can, we can choose that narrative. So that's really something for you as leadership to decide what, what makes REPO different? You know, we, we know our schools, we know our location, we know our, our, you know, bureaucracy is less. So those are making things, but as far as physical features of our housing, what does that look like? What does it look different? So one of the biggest things, it goes back to code enforcement and stuff, but declining neighborhoods. This is something, it's not unique to Republic. You know, the generational difference between how people did it back then and how they do it now, how much pride they show in their property and their cars, you name it, it's there. One thing that I never thought would be a change in housing is that it would be disposable. And for years, you know, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, flippers became, you know, kind of the HGTV, the TLC videos and stuff, that really became popular, right? Those shows are still popular. And everybody said, well, when's this going to market in? You know, these flippers, they're going to run out of homes, they're going to do everything else. And what we've really seen is a generational shift. People buy homes, use them and leave them. And the market conditions have been so good since oh, nine through 12 that they can still make money not doing a single thing to those homes. Let them depreciate, not change the floors, not paint them, not clean them. And this is really, again, in your demographic, in your lower price range homes, you see it even more. But I'm telling you, I've been in near million dollar homes that were gross. So there is some demographic shift and where their money come from, who knows? I don't know. But again, the pride in the, in the homes is, is declining on its own. People don't take care of them and they're just using them like they're disposable. Again, the dishwasher that used to last 20 years, you know, after five, you're probably shopping for another one. Homes are kind of seeing that. So the renovation, the flippers, that business is going to do nothing but grow in my opinion. I, I've seen it, there's more and more, you know, yes, it's hard to find those projects because there's more and more flippers doing it and the inventory is down. But I don't think that's, that's something that's going away. It's, it's something that's there and it's going to continue and people are going to specialize in that. How do you protect neighborhoods from declining? Effective code enforcement, design of those, of those, and really what you, you know, controlling what you want your community to look like. Those, you know, declining is, is, is hard to metric because you could look at some of the older, what I would call tapjack houses in, in Republic, and you could say, well, those are our declining neighborhoods. What are you declining? Are you saying their market value is declining? Or is it purely the looks and the character of the, of the people who are living declining? Cause their market value has done nothing but increase. I mean, I remember when I got my start in real estate in oh, three, a lady coming into the office and slamming a file on the desk. And she said, I never thought in a million years, never thought in a million years this would happen. I'm like, what are you talking about? And she's like, I just sold a tapjack house for $89,000. She's like, I remember when they were building those things and you could buy them for 34. And she was just shocked. Where's the average one at now? 189. So again, those are declining neighborhoods, but not in a sense of, of market value. Those people who own those homes are still making appreciation on their values and their homes. That is now your starter home in Republic, wanting to move into that market. So those are kind of there. Republic's future needs. So this is just more mid-range homes, three to 500K. More options for smaller scale home builders, they need the lots. New diverse private housing options, so high density, lower cost options is something that is missing in the market. So continued parks and rec development, you guys have done an amazing job. Republic has so many different features and different things, and it's tying that together. I know the trails are growing. There's, there's those kinds of things, but these future developments need to incorporate those things into it. Your code enforcement, your developer infrastructure investments, your regional subdivision regulation by council. So review that. What does it say? Do you know what it says? What, what can we do? How do we adjust that? Or how do you adjust that as a governing body? And what do you want it to look like? These are just a few of the, the ideas. When I say higher density, lower cost, right now there are no townhomes on the market in Republic. There's 130 listings, active listings today. If you compare that to the median sales price of, of 23, which is 246,000, of those 130 on the market today, only 13 of those fall below the median house price. That's how short the inventory is in that market. So when I say this, it, we have to start looking at some alternative developments because the, you know, when I started, when me and my wife got married 25 years ago, you know, our first home was a brand new three bedroom, two bath house that cost $75,000. A Monteleone built home, it was nothing wrong with it. That was great, right? We were both working, going to college, and we could barely afford it. So now the median home or medium household income in Republic, not that much higher than it was 25 years ago, but home prices are quadrupled that. So how do they get in? The average home price, again, 246,000. I've got data that shows the median home or medium income falls between 175, or I'm sorry, this is household income, 50 to 75K is roughly 1,700 of the households in Republic. 1,700 fall between 50 and 75K. Another 1,100 between 75 and 100,000. So that's the majority of our population. Above 100K, there's only a total of about 1,800 residents altogether, above 100K household income. To qualify, this is just rough. If you had a car payment, some college debt, a little bit of credit card debt, and you had a household of two, and you're looking at what income level do I need to qualify for 100 or $246,000 average house in Republic? You need to have an income, a household income of around 65,000 minimum. And that's if you have one car payment and minimal bills. So you can see where, where we've really were priced out. And so we have to start to develop those, those, those different looking facilities and different housing for people if we want that beginner family to come into Republic and look to move up. So again, we've got those second and mid-range home gaps as well. So we're kind of doing good at the high end, kind of doing good at the starting new home middle ground, but we've got some lower ground to cover and we got some mid-ground to cover as far as what our inventory looks like. And so I just want to highlight before I take questions, the high density housing, this is just kind of one aerial, some, you know, artist conception of that. But you know, like I said, when you, you, there's a, there's a negative connotation to high density housing, but it can be attractive. And there's lots of developers and people doing it really, really well. They're just, it just has to be managed. So you don't want it to look like row housing, but there's, there's ways to make that. There's, you know, again, just all different kinds of designs with center courtyards, with the proper buffering and the proper design of those properties. They've gotten really good over the years. So like I said, there's kind of, when I talk to people about that, it's like, we need more high density housing. That's what I'm looking at. I want nice, attractive properties. I haven't even got into senior housing. You need it. You're probably, I would guess 1,500 units short of low income senior housing. There's just none. And I haven't talked to any senior officials or anything lately in years, but that was the, that was the message years ago, and I'm, I'm saying it's still there. Questions? Comments? What can else can I give you or look at? Love to take questions, hit me up with anything. There's more data sets. Like I said, there's, there is more data than you want to shake a stick at. So sorry to bore you. Like I said, hopefully there's, there's some ground here that you can learn from and, and talk about. And one of the things that I thought that we didn't, that I didn't really put in, like I said, you have to stop at some point, is the square footage of homes were really, really heavy in that 1,100 to 1,500 square foot. Like I said, I can break the, the numbers down if you want to see graphs and stuff. That's how dominant we are in those, in those square footage reins. Again, we're lacking in the townhomes and the available purchases. Like I said, we have some to rent. They're still in hot demand, but we don't have any to own. That's a different set of, of conditions and stuff like that. There are townhomes. I know there's, there's active permits out there for new townhome projects that are in. They're just not for individual sale. And that's what we're looking at for some of that. So questions?
Alex, I have a question. I think, I think it's a fantastic presentation. It generates a lot of questions. It could probably extend this conversation for another hour because one of our strengths is the lack of bureaucracy. Changing the subdivision rigs to add all that green, add the green space, which completely there and add sidewalks drives the cost of each lot up, which drives the price of the home up, which drives it outside the median income. I think you, the massive comment that you made is what has to change is the level of pay or availability for payors for those that can afford to buy those vehicles or those, those homes, which a lot of the driving discussions we've had is when people ask me, how do you drive up the home prices? You got to create job opportunities. So housing does not create the job opportunities. That's why I think the economic development discussion, which is where we're very good on that side. But when I start thinking about developer infrastructure investments and what they're going to have to pay to make those improvements to do it, that's, that is where the cost is going to be applied to the home buyer. They won't be able to afford it. Therefore that's what makes it so much more difficult. It'd be an interesting conversation with the real estate community of how to achieve. Like I think that those are great things to point out, but what is the, what are the builders going to be willing to absorb? Because there's going to be a pushback on that same comment that if you had the, the home builders association and you're having that same conversation, it would be like a completely different dynamic.
Absolutely.
And so how do we come together and collaborate on that versus just an elected body deciding that is something that'll have to, that I think could be done, which is why we do the, the developers meeting is like, what do we need to do to achieve a planned development for the community? I think that is the discussion for this council. That would be a, an even better direction that I would give you in just how to take all this information and boil it down. Code enforcement's never been a question mark of what it is. The question mark of code enforcement within, and even with the prosecutor here, is what Missouri laws allow you to do in general about, you can call me and tell me that there's a problem with your neighbor. My code enforcement officer can't just drive up and knock on your door necessarily without some level of pushback. And I'm saying from the prosecutor, but it takes 10 days once you send a letter for them to even, to get it before they can even act. It may be 14 or 24 or 30 days before it ever gets to a court. But I'm not disagreeing that it does not belong in there. I'm just saying that it's one of those things that I wish it was easier said than done.
And I have no better, better hope than the city of Republic to find a way to, to lessen the bureaucracy there and streamline that process.
Yeah.
It's, it's a tough one to do, but it's something that, that does affect the declining neighborhoods.
No question.
And, and all that property values that all goes into it. So, and this is, like I said, in, in, this is a narrow view, and I definitely get the developer and all that other cost. What will drive that and change that besides what the, the city itself does is the market.
Hundred percent.
Those, those time on, those time on market, when those builders start to sit on this inventory, you know, and that will likely happen as interest rates maybe come down, maybe they don't. Time on market is extending. And when they have to make the interest payments on that, they will make those properties more attractive.
Ah, that's cool.
You know, I mean, that's one way to address it because you have to put something in